We thought that last session was until you see this one. I just took the ACP six twenty and we are gonna talk about it. I make sure you hit that subscribe.
I am, I have been waiting all weekend for this.
So make sure, well, before we get into it, make sure you hit that subscribe button and make sure you hit that drop and a special shout out to revise for making not only this episode, but this entire eighteen episode series possible. Uh, and we're gonna have a bonus one on Thursday. So make sure you are subscribed and come back for that one. So Rodney, ACP six twenty. I am mad.
Are you mad?
I am very mad. I'm very upset.
I've been waiting to hear your opinion of this. I tried to give you respect and give you the weekend and not boss you about work stuff over the weekend, but I have been waiting for this. I think I text you like midnight last night, my time.
Yes.
By the way.
Yeah, it was a little late. Uh, I have not seen, I'm supposed to get the, the thing that tells you your score. Maybe it's in my junk mail. Let me check. I haven't seen, I was supposed to get it. Nope. There it is. Yep. It went to my junk mail. Well, congratulations from Mike Cannon Brooks. So let me share my screen here and we'll take a look at what, what happened here. I've been looking, I've been waiting for this email too, but it apparently went straight to junk. So this is from Mike Cannon Brooks. Congratulations. Wait, where's the rest of it?
They usually give you a breakdown, don't they?
Oh, here we go. I found it. Okay, here we go. I just got the congressional mic. Alright, so I got an eighty-five percent.
Which again, people is a fantastic score for an ACP. Let's not bemoan Alex's achievement here.
Oh, bemoan. I don't know about that, but here's, here's where we landed with this. So some thoughts. Nothing on plan. So the fact that we spent three sessions on plans, don't, don't, don't worry about plans. There is not a single thing on there with plans. The reporting, we breezed through it. We breezed through the plans. I'm sorry, through the reporting, but I struggled the most with reporting because the devil's in the details. Right? I know what each of the reports do, but to answer questions on how to apply them, that was like crap. That was hard.
We do have question already, not to interrupt, but Liz is a top fan.
Yeah, I, I went to the center. Um, I don't like to do my home mainly because well, look at my background. I love to have a dedicated room in your house.
If you've never tried to take them at home, they have you cover litter, literally everything. If you have pictures on the wall, covered up, books covered up. Um, they have you look at your table, your look, if you have multiple monitors, got disconnect those. Not just turn them off, disconnect them. So your computer only shows one active monitor.
Yeah. So it's too much headache for me. I have way too much crap. I'm more stressed about that. Yeah. So I, I kinda like being in the test center. I showed up, I showed up a little early that let me start it. They let me start about fifteen minutes early because I got there about fifteen minutes early. Um, and so went to the restroom, checked in my stuff. They make you turn off your phone, put it in a locker. And then they wanted me down just to make sure I didn't have any metal. If you're wearing pants, they make you like roll up, at least in the test center I went to, they make you like roll up your pants sleeve a little bit. To make sure you're not taking anything in. The only annoying thing is it really depends on where your test center is at, right? So, my test center has really thin walls. So if somebody's driving around with like super loud music, you're gonna hear that loud music from outside. Uh, there's also other people in the room with you. So if they're coughing or sneezing or doing whatever, you're hearing that. Right? And so that's slightly annoying. Um, but they do give you headphones. They, they can do like the headphone thing or they have earplugs that you can wear. And they give you two pieces of paper and two pieces of pencils and then you have to return to them if you take the ACP. So they wanna see.
Yes. Um, that mirrors my experience. I've never had anyone have me roll up my pants sleeve. I don't know if I just look less suspicious than Alex, what the story is.
We can't all be gringos, dude.
That's the thing. White people don't think I'm white sometimes.
Yeah, but it was, it was an enjoyable experience. Um, it wasn't too bad. I had fun.
It's, I've done them at home. Yeah, sorry. I've done them at home. I've done the testing centers. I always prefer a testing center. It is worth the extra money. Um, just for not having the hassle. Um, that being said, if you can take it at an last year event, team twenty-five, team twenty-five Europe. That is a whole nother experience together that you should try sometime.
Never. A room full of a hundred people. I don't think so. Um, let's talk about the test though, for a second. So the test was hard. This was the hardest one that I've taken. This is also, I think, the lowest score that I've gotten. And the reason that this test was hard was because the questions were not what I was told to expect. There was a crap ton of questions on automation, more than I would have cared for. Like a lot. I think that, that was, I was not prepared to be making automation rules at the test center. Right? So I, I wouldn't say blind side of me, but I was, I was, I was general, um, genuinely surprised by, I'm like, wow, there, there's a lot of questions on automation. Right? So if you, if you are not comfortable with automation rules, get very, very comfortable with automation rules. Cause you will get a lot of questions on them. The reports, that too kinda threw me for a curve ball. The reports were literally looking at reports and going like, what's this thing telling you? And what's it not telling you? And you're like, I don't know. So.
I mean, we should, that should be, we look at these reports most days. So.
Yeah.
I'm a little surprised at that.
No, but you're like really looking at like the, like I can give you a summary of what each report does, but like this one's telling you on June tenth, what happened? And so now you gotta like zoom in and go crap. What happened that day? Like what is?
And I hope they don't sleep out on monitors at the testing center.
Yeah, no, but it's like, you gotta like get in there and like, you really gotta like, it's not asking you generic questions of like, oh, which report do you need to, to like measure, like sprint progress? Or something like that, right? Like it, it's, it's not a generic question. It's like on this specific thing, like what happened this day and who did it and why didn't they do it or stuff like that? I'm like, I don't know. It's too detailed for me. And so, uh, I, I didn't care for it. So I, I'm like, you know what? Next, next. And it shows.
That eases my concern actually, if anything, because I'm fairly good at that when it comes to reports.
I hate reporting and I, I actively avoid reports when I'm doing my clients as well. Like dashboards.
We all have our strength as, um, Jira admin. So that makes sense.
But Rodney, that's not the part that pissed me off though. I could have dealt with those reports. The part that pissed me off is that at least, so out of seventy questions, at least fifteen of these questions were choose two, choose three. Way too many questions on choose two, choose three. I thought I was told that last thing I rid of that crap.
No, we were told they are getting rid of that crap.
Well, do not take the six twenty until they get rid of that crap. That's what made this test hard. Honestly, if I would account, reporting aside, everything else that I missed on these other ones because of the choose two, choose three.
I, um, I'm not as concerned because my first four ACPs were like that.
I, my one twenty and five twenty were not like that. So I only ever.
Oh, the one twenty and five twenty were not, but the one hundred, the two hundred, the four hundred.
Time I took an exam like that, using that older style. And so that I was, I was not expecting that and I was not ready to walk into the test to choose those choose two or choose three ones. And so that, that's what really upset me the most is like, I thought that last thing was fixing all this crap, but apparently they haven't caught up to everything. So, um, I think I last had to do a little bit better to catch these up because yeah, it was, it's not fun. Also, the other thing that I, the other thing that I call out is that the work items and issues has not made it to the test, right? So all the learning material that we went through has been updated, but the test has definitely not been updated. Yeah. All the slide that applied, there was, it was too many. It was more questions that I would have, that I would have enjoyed. Now, a good amount I got right, a good amount I think I got right. Like there was a couple where I'm like, I knew for sure these, these two. But it's one of those things where again, if you're not reading correctly and you forget to choose one or choose two or three, then you're gonna miss the question just on a technicality, not, not because you don't know the content. And so be very, very careful with this one, especially if you're taking it before it last and updates it, you gotta read it. Choose two, you gotta pick two on there. Choose three, you gotta get three.
Yep.
Other things that I didn't like that kinda got me, um, what is it? Oh, um, this test was generally hard, right? So, so I ran through the test. I, I did the entire test in thirty-five minutes. So I ran through it in thirty-five minutes. Um, I then pulled out that piece of paper and pen and I, I need, I know I needed forty-two questions correct to pass. Right? And so I went through and I had maybe thirty that I knew without a shadow of a doubt that I had like in the bag. I mean, that can't be right. That's not forty-two. I was like, oh crap, I'm in trouble. Uh, so I went back again. And I'm like, so I got the number to a comfortable forty-two, but running through it a third time, I was like crap. I ran through this three thing three times already and forty-two is a questionable forty-two. Like I couldn't comfortably, I can comfortably tell you like thirty. I was like, yep, I got those right. But I was able to like wiggle my way into forty-two, but I was nervous because I finished the test in an hour and ten minutes. And so I was, I was nervous. I was like, shoot, I still have two hours left. Should I retake it a four time? But by then I've already ran through it three times. And I'm like, I didn't know them the first two times. I didn't know the first three times. So running through it a four time is not gonna make me feel any better. And so I'm like, ah, screw it. If I fail, I fail. And so I hit it and I was genuinely surprised to get an eighty-five, very, very surprised. Cause I, I thought for sure.
Better than you thought you did, but.
Yeah, I thought it would be closer to the sixties after running through it three times. That's how hard this test was.
So here's my biggest question. I was always told by, about this test and it's DC version, the ACP six hundred is, if you are a full-fledged Jira admin, already have your one hundred slash one twenty, all that fun stuff. This one is particularly hard because you have to think about it from the perspective of a project admin.
I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have, that, that thought didn't even cross my mind.
Okay.
I, I didn't care for that. I, in fact, I would argue that the majority of the questions, like at least maybe thirty to forty percent are carryovers from one twenty. In fact, I probably like all those automation rules. I feel like should have been one twenty. There was like five or six JQL questions that would have been one twenty. Heck, I got a freaking components and which one, who gets to assign the component or like who's the ultimate assignee based on components? That's all one twenty crap. And I'm like, I thought I called that chapter of my life already. And so, so I would say to prepare better for this test, I would have invested time reviewing the one twenty material. I feel like I would have, if, I feel like had I reviewed the one twenty material, I would have been better off in this test. Had I really understand what the dashboards and the reports do at a more meaningful level. Beyond even like you literally gotta use your reports daily and do driving decisions with those reports to figure it out. And then of course the automation rules, that, that stuff was tough.
I mean, I've had a whole course I've taken from Atlassian, well, one of Atlassian's partners on dashboards and reporting. And I've used that for years since. So I'm not as concerned about that, that section. I know I have my weaknesses as Jira admin. We all do. That is one where I'm confident I'm stronger in.
Yeah, but there wasn't a single question where I was like, is this from the admin perspective or from the, from the project admin? Not a single one popped up to me that I would have had a, you know, double back or think about it. Like they were very straightforward.
That's good. That's good.
So, but again, what made it hard is a dumb, you know, choose two, choose three, because you don't know. And then I ultimately gave up on the report. I think like had I, had I focused on them a little bit more and actually like, you know, try to read them. And I tried to do positive elimination as much as possible, but even then there was a couple of like choose two on those reports. I'm like, I don't know, man. I, I'm like, I'm not gonna know this stuff. Without Google, I don't, I don't know. Without Jira on the side to like try it out, like you just have to make a call. Uh, Liz says, would you put it difficulty ahead of the five twenty then? One twenty, five twenty, six twenty. So, I would say, so based on my test scores, I got it. What was it? Ninety-three? Ronnie, what, what, I gotta go back. Let me see.
I want to say you got ninety-three on the one twenty.
Let me, let me see if I can recover my, who did it come from? PSI, TSI? No reply.
Certmetric, PSI.
PSI exams. Let me, let me see if I can pull up my other ones. So five twenty. So the five twenty, I got a ninety-two percent. Let me reshare my screen here. I got a ninety-two percent on the, on the five twenty. I thought, so I freaked out on this one when I was studying.
There it is.
Yeah. When I was studying for this test, I was getting every practice question wrong, like every single one of them. I was like, oh crap, I am screwed. But this was the most straightforward test that I took so far. Like to me, like taking the test was easier than the study material because the questions were clear. They were concise. You knew what to expect. Like you, like it was just easy. So that was that one. Uh, one twenty. I got an eighty-six percent. Again, this was pretty straightforward. I, there's a section that I got a hundred percent in. There's a lot more sections, but this, this test was very straightforward as well. None of that trickery of the, the choose two, choose three. Um, and then this last one, this, this one, I, like I said, I, I walked out of this one going like, that was hard.
Did you finally experience that panic of that final submit button?
No, because by then I was, I was beaten to submission. I, again, I still had two hours left. And I'm like, I should really, I was like, you know what? No, forget this. I, I was like in a state of like denial at that point. I was dead of denial and I was like, I am just, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna hit the button. I didn't even care. In fact, I almost hit the button the first time around. I went to the button on the first one because I, I forgot to go back to page one and I made it to the last page and I hit submit. And I like, used to have like fourteen or twenty questions flagged. Alright, what, what was this one? Second question. Yes, I agree that I took the one twenty and six twenty consecutive days at the team twenty-five event. There you go.
As said, I've been taking these things for, my first certification was in twenty seventeen. So it's been eight years. Um, I've been taking these things. I think I'm average. I've done about one a year, give or take. It wrapped up recently for some reason.
Yeah, I got one more to take. I got the four twenty. And then that's it. And the only reason I'm doing the four twenties, because again, I have, I have the code for free. But if I didn't have that code for free, I would not be taking another test.
So what you're saying is when they come out with more ACPs, I need to have discussion with Ree and Joanne?
I know because they made me work for this one because my last one is though, this one here. Oh, you didn't get it, huh?
Oh, I got a couple.
No, no, no. We, this, the, so at team twenty-five, you had to go to like five stations and do five different activities. And if you did all five, you got a, you got, let me show you. If you did all five things, you got a T-shirt, which my son got, somehow I ended up with three of them. So my son has two larges and I got my extra large, but you, you got a T-shirt. I did also go like, this is the last thing I did right before teams closed out. So maybe they're just trying to get rid of the T-shirts, but I got this pin. That you got. And then, um, I got a T-shirt and then they gave you this thing right here, which is a code for, well, I won't show you the other side, but it's a code for, for the exam.
Here's the thing though, team twenty-five Europe, I got, um, when I passed my, um, one twenty there, I got two of those code cards that have been sitting on my nightstand. So I finally used one of the two and I got one more.
Yeah. Well, if it wasn't for that code card, I would not be taking the four twenty because as a champion, Atlassian has yet to onboard me and I don't have any of the benefits. Uh, we got a question here from Ricardo. I'm a new being started the mark, started three months ago. I'm currently studying for the nine oh five and plans to hit the six twenty-six months.
That's aggressive.
Yeah. Cause the problem here is, it's not really a problem, but the challenge here is that these exams, they don't question you on facts, right? Like, I mean, yes, some questions are gonna be factual based, like, I don't know.
What is this?
Yeah. What's a scrum board, stuff like that. But the, what makes it hard is the nuance of here's a scenario, is scrum better or combine better? Right? There's really, really easy ones where like, okay, the team wants to time track or use time tracking, what kind of estimation tactic do they use? That's an easy one. But it's those, those ones where like, there's no right answer. Like it could be common or it can be scrum because it's beauty is in the eye of the beholder. And that, that I think makes horrible test question, which I'm told that last is gonna get rid of, but that's why I think the, the one, the, the six twenty, sorry. I think the five twenty is easy. The material is hard, right? I think there's a lot of hard things to learn in the five twenty from a technical perspective. But the questions are more factual. Less theoretical. And so while the content, the, the technical content is harder, it's easier to memorize than it is to do the subjective six twenty crap.
So, Atlassian and Alex says this is a lot like the old salad tests that I give him nightmares about constantly because it's fun. Now he knows what I'm really talking about, but in all seriousness, Atlassian used to say for an ACP, not an ACA, an ACP, you need a minimum two years' experience before you tackle it.
Yeah. If it was six twenty, I would give you that. I, um, I would definitely echo that one.
Now, that's before we had plethora of, um, study guides and people like us posting this content out there. Before, if you wanted any help on this, let me tell you, it was the bare minimum of help because I've taken a couple of these classes. You had to sign up for like three hundred dollar classes at team, well, summit, whatever it was. And take that there. And even then they're just like, oh, here's what the questions are about. You have to study them on your own. So, um, but it's a lot easier now that we have guides where people have gone through the material and, um, worked on this. I'm not saying anyone in particular, us.
Yeah. Uh, but yeah, you definitely, like I said, especially in the reports, you can't automate these two sections here. You can't memorize this. There's just no way. The, the questions are so unique. Right? And they got a million different questions and it's scenario based and you gotta, you gotta pick the right answer based on you building automation rules and based on you reading a lot of reports. So yeah, in six months, if you wanna go crazy and just build a thousand different automations and read and understand every single report, then it'll be easy. But otherwise, I do dozens of automations per day. So I build it up over the last five years.
Um, Liz does have.
What is that? Okay.
Yeah.
This one, uh, one of those things that just kept me as a system admin in general, create a free Atlassian account login with the test users and yourself.
So yeah, um, Ricardo, um, create that free account, create that free instance. Use it as your personal test ground. If you break something, just delete and start over and from a fresh instance, it's not that big a deal. It is invaluable to have a playground to try stuff in when you're learning this stuff. Um, the only place that won't help and where you really kinda have to depend on the material is the reports because that depends on underlying data that you really don't wanna be self-populating.
Yeah. And the automation, I think it's not that bad, but you gotta like, I think they put automation and I don't know where they put the JQL in there, but I had a, a few JQL questions. So I don't know if they combined it with automation or the, in this one. But you gotta know your JQL. You gotta know how these things work and, and you gotta read it carefully, right? Like, there was questions where like they, they gave you the JQL and the questions like not, like it's not directly asking you the question, right? But three letters, then and and or drastically change the output of a JQL, right? And when I read that question, it's like, what's the output of this JQL? Well, I read it as an or. So when I first went and answered it, I, I gave it the answer from an, from an or. But when I went back the second time and I reread it, I was like, wait a minute, this is an and. This is not, this is not an or statement. This is an and statement. And so I'm like, I changed my answer there because I'm like, well, I, I would have gone that one wrong because again, I, two characters, two to three characters will screw the answer up a lot.
So here's my biggest question, Alex, because this is the point I harp on. Having gone through all the studying, um, eighteen of these courses now and having taken the test. Do you feel the prep work has made you a more experienced and better admin?
I say yes, more than the exam itself. But, but only because like we may need discoveries because Atlassian is changing all the time, right? And so if it wasn't for that simple fact that Jira's different today than it was yesterday and it's, it'll be different in six weeks. Those, those, that prep work and all those things kinda give you insights to just stuff that you just take for granted or just weren't aware. Um, one thing that came up in my question was the filtering part. But that, but see, but this is where you get screwed a little bit, right? Because I, without addressing anything in particular, right? But I definitely had to know the filter, the, called the filter part. But here's the thing, like we did one time, right? And is it in or is it equals?
It depends.
And right, but in the test, you better know if it's an equal or is it, or is it an in?
Um, but I do want to harp on something. If you're taking.
It's definitely not in.
If you're taking the exam just to take the exam, you are missing the point. The piece of paper is helpful and there are jobs that will ask for you to have some certification and all that, but that is, should not be your end goal. This should be about the process of learning because that is, will serve you far better in your career than the piece of paper, having to go through and touch all the parts that you're, you don't touch on a daily basis. So, oh, that's how this works.
Yeah. Because well, I mean, this is a great example, right? Like this would have been something that you need to know for the test. But in the heat of the moment, whether it's an equals or an in is less, like on the test, obviously it matters. Right? You, you gotta know, is it equal, filter equals the filter or is it filter in the filter, right? But the more important thing in my mind is I can now go to clients and go, hey, we can like do inception here with the filters. And that to me is way more valuable than did I get that question right or wrong on the test. Like I now have a new tactic in my arsenal of tactics in Jira to help clients or teams like do these advanced JQL queries. But again, maybe I didn't get right in the test because you didn't memorize the syntax. But this is, I just figured it out right now by trial and error, which again, you can't do in the test, but this is why I find it, I find this much more valuable than, than memorizing the syntax. Just knowing that you can do.
That's the point. That's the point I'm trying, I want to make here. It's not about the exam itself. I love having the shiny pieces of paper. I love, there's certain prestige, especially if you have multiple ACPs. There's certain prestige in that, but that's not the most helpful part. The most helpful part is the fact that I've had to study for, what is it? Eight exams now? That study has made me an expert in this product.
Yeah. The other thing for me personally, I'm not allowed to wear a certain jacket to my closet until I get all four.
I can wear it.
I can't. So I need one more to, to wear. I was explicitly told you're not allowed to wear this until I get all four. So I'm just following the rules.
And I'm gonna hold you to that. Because I can and I don't want it to be cheapened.
Yep. Although Sarah said that they started giving these out to people. I mean, that's how I got mine. They just handed them out.
Well, I mean, they're also changed the syntax or the, um, title. So it's no longer Atlassian certified expert. It's Atlassian certified administration expert.
Yeah.
Just doesn't have this cool acronym.
Well, quick shot. Well, quick shout out to, to our good friend Rob who does the four twenty and some of the other sessions, right? He does some of the A Cs as well, like they have a Discord over there and that's something that Ronnie, maybe you and I should consider or talk about because, yeah.
I'm active on his Discord.
Yeah, so is my wife. Um, but yeah, maybe let us know if you'd be interested in us maybe combining forces or setting up our own stuff, but it would be interesting to, the study stuff, like, I don't know, I feel like, he, here's my two cents, right? Like, if you've never taken the test and this is, so let me find my words correctly cuz we did this intentionally. I'm doing, we didn't wanna get in trouble with that last year, right? So I, I don't remember seeing anything, but we're not supposed to give you the questions, right? From the test, right? That's fine. That, that's great and dandy. But it's, we decided to, in the interest of not getting in trouble at all and plausible deniability, to do these study sessions blindly, to never, I've never taken the test and Ronnie, you've taken a test, but not the test that we need. You haven't taken the test that we were studying for, right?
No, I haven't even taken the six hundred, so.
Right. So, so we wanted to, again, have that plausible deniability where anything that we told you was just speculation because we've never taken the tests. And so there's that aspect of it, but now that we've taken the test, I feel like I can provide ten times more value because now I know what to expect. And versus the, again, that plausible deniability where we didn't wanna, we could have very easily said, we never taken the test, so we didn't know that was a test question. Now, this is why I'm being cautious to not oversharing stuff, right? But I can't, I couldn't remember the test questions. If I, I remember details of the pain point.
That's the thing, um, obviously me and you are both large in the community. We are well-known names. I've had people approach me multiple times asking me for test questions and here's the fact, people, I don't remember the test questions after I hit submit. Like, I can tell you what I got right and what wrong as a percentage, but.
I, I can remember one question and the only reason I can remember that question is cuz the same freaking question I got in the one twenty. And I was like, I wonder if I got it right in the one twenty. But folks, learn how components work. They will be on the test, on the one twenty and on the six twenty.
Um, but as I said, it's not about the piece of paper. At the end of the day, it's about the process of learning. Um, I've questioned that myself, especially for this one because, um, Alex, you and me both know for the one twenty and five twenty, the learning course was exceptional.
Yeah, definitely. That's why one of our opening statements on this one was like, we shouldn't have wasted three days on the, on the plans. There was not a single question on plans. Why the heck did Atlassian include the plans in the, in the six twenty materials is beyond me. Like it should, that section shouldn't, that whole module shouldn't be anywhere near this course at all. There's not a single question or some, I don't even think the word plan shows up in the test at all. And so don't waste your time studying anything on plans. Automation rules and boards are gonna kick your butt. I would invest my time studying that one. The board settings, let's go back to this one, uh, board settings, board configuration. Now you can see I scored the highest, that, that you just gotta know what all those buttons do.
You're, um, we need to turn your screen back up.
Uh, we're playing, okay, yeah. So automation and reporting will kick your butt. J Q L, that, that stuff's hard, right? Little characters, guys, like literally the questions are the devil's in the detail, right? Like, I did, I had a question where like, you have, you have four answers and this is in the one twenty as well, right? But you have four answers. Luckily, it's a radio button and not a freaking checkbox, otherwise you're screwed, right? But there's, with the four questions, one of them has like an and statement in it, one of them has an or statement in it, right? One of them has an in statement in it, one of them has a not in statement in it. Well, which of the four is it? And again, unless you've done enough repetitions on the, what's the difference between, what is the true difference between an, an equal statement in a J Q L versus a, an in in the J Q L, like, I do these every time, but I, I become over-reliant on this message, right? I become over-reliant on, when I do that and I hit enter and you, Jira goes, nope, and I'm like, whoa, clearly it's the other one. Right? But until you memorize these when you're taking the test, you're gonna get that wrong because it's not, it's not something that you actively do and it hasn't registered in your brain yet. You have to do enough repetitions here for this to, to work.
So here's a question for viewers, both present and future. Would you like us, cuz I've still got two weeks before mine, exactly two weeks before I take my A C P, um, six twenty. I've already committed, I'm already signed up, it's going to be a thing. Um, after we do that, would you like us to at some point in the future, verbally after we've forgotten all the questions that Atlassian cannot add us about it? Um, revisit this with our knowledge about, not necessarily specific questions, but what are the topics on the test?
Yeah, I think it would be interesting to redo the, like the one twenty, five twenty, uh, uh, like all these again, but given what we know now that we've passed them. I think that would be interesting. I've also be curious in the chat, would you guys want us to put some sort of like a, I don't, I dare I say paid bootcamp, but some sort of like a accelerated study? Cuz honestly, like, that, this is kinda what I was saying earlier, right? Like, when we did the study sessions, we're coming in so blindly to the, for the plausible deniability. But given what I know now, like I can tell you, don't waste your time on that or waste your time over here. Which is very different than when we're studying, we're just taking it at a last face value because we don't know what to study or not study. Right? I can tell you that automation rules, like if you don't know automation rules, like you will struggle on this test.
You got another congrats.
Philip, I hate taking. I would say the opposite, but yeah, but again, like.
Which folks, I need your help with, cuz we all know Alex just loves taking tests. We have to, as a community, convince him to take an exam dude, at Team Twenty Five Europe.
I'm not doing that, but let me tell you a little side story. So I get there like at eight thirty and the exam center is still closed. And so there's this other dude outside rocking this really cool mustache. And we're hanging out and like two or three minutes later, um, they opened the test center up. And so the guy walks in cuz he was there first and then I'm waiting for, for me to go, right? But while we're, while he's turning on his computer, you know, like turning on the office cuz the test center hadn't, hadn't been turned on yet. Um, we, you know, we're just doing like little small talk and the, the guy's like, oh, what are you in for? And I'm like, uh, I'm taking a technical test. And he's like, oh, that's cool. What kind of technical test? I'm like, uh, it's like project management stuff. Like, how do you describe Jira to, to regular people? Um, and so he's like, and so he's like, oh, you're nervous? I'm like, I don't know. I, I spent seventeen sessions studying for it, so I kinda have to pass it at this point. It's like, oh, why is that? And I'm like, I mean, well, because I, I do these publicly on the internet and so like, if I don't pass it, it's gonna be a disgrace, right? He's like, no way, you do these publicly? I'm like, yeah, I, I'm, I'm Dr. Jira. And he's like, I'm like, I have a YouTube channel. He's like, oh, what's your YouTube channel? So both the guy that's opening the task plus the cool dude with the cool mustache, they're like Googling me on, on the spot there. And, and then, yeah, that's, I show up and then they're like, oh, that's so cool and stuff. I'm like, yeah, I, I, I'm, so I'm like, I have three hours to take the test. Dude, I walked in out of that thing in an hour and the guy, I can kinda just feel him looking at me, he's like, cocky bastard. Cuz I was kinda hyping it up and I'm like, this test is gonna be so easy. Like, how hard can it be? Uh, he had two hours for his test and he, he had not finished, like, he walked in, he walked in fifteen minutes before me and I walked out for, I was the first person out cuz I, I just, I walked out after an hour.
That's typical, I find. If you know the material well enough, you're probably not gonna take more than an hour on any A C P. If you don't know the material well enough, you're probably gonna take closer to three.
Yeah. The other thing I'll tell you on your test day, clear your calendar for the rest of the day cuz my mind was just foggy the rest of the, like, I was like, I felt like I had to work like a twelve hour shift or something.
Well, you remember college when we, it was final season, right?
I only hard, like I only worked hard for one hour, but like I was done the whole day. Like, it was mentally draining, like the neurons that were connecting in my head were just intense. But it was fun. Yeah, let us know if, if you guys are interested in like a bootcamp, uh, discords. Um, I was thinking of maybe even putting together like a guide, like a PDF or something, Ronnie, that we can like use as like lead magnets and stuff like that, like some, some PDF things, um, then maybe even like a Udemy course or something like that where, where it's like a little bit more detailed.
Going to rope me into Udemy, Udemy course grade tech at some point, aren't you?
Yeah, so is, I'm gonna rub Robin too. Robin are gonna work on the Jura and.
Robin already does Udemy courses, doesn't he?
Yeah, well, he's the, that's, that's his bread and butter or whatever it's called. But yeah, those are, those are fun. Um, but yeah, no, the, the test, at the end of the day, I can tell you the, the, the biggest, the biggest lesson that I learned was again, those, those reports, they, I, I, we glanced, like we powered through them there at the end and I kind of, that was my, my biggest, if I can give you my biggest regret is that we powered through the reports. Right? Like not clicking on the buttons and understanding what does this line do? What does this line mean? Right? Cuz that's the more important, right? Like knowing what the lines do, I got down, I know what the burn down does. But knowing to say, okay, because this line looks like this and this line looks like this, what does that mean? What's that data telling us? That's what you gotta know for the test. It's less of like, they're not gonna ask you.
A lot like the original A C P one hundred.
Yeah, cuz they're not gonna ask you like, what's the, the red line? Is that the burn down line? Like, they're not gonna ask you that. They ask you like, on this specific date, given this, is this a scope increase? Is this a scope decrease? How many points? Stuff like that, like you gotta know that, that detail way more. Way, way more.
We are getting pinged.
Uh-oh, oh, is that you too? Take me through this. The box.
Again, Sean, if you're watching the stream, this is continuing education, right?
Right. Um, oh, one thing that we're gonna do too, so on Thursday, Ronnie, I haven't asked you, but come, make sure you come back on Thursday cuz we're gonna do a bonus episode where we're gonna, our, our channel sponsor who graciously, you know, pay for us to be here and, and make all these sessions available. A couple, so a couple of disclaimers. Now that we're done, we are gonna compile this, what is it? Gonna be an eighteen hour course?
Right at.
Yeah, so we're dropping a roughly seventeen to eighteen hour course here, um, just one continuous motion. So you're gonna get that in the next couple of weeks as soon as the Jura guy circles around to it. Um, two, what were they going with this?
Something about a bonus episode on Thursday.
Revised graciously again helped us out, right? Cuz this, I mean, eighteen hours of our lives came out of this, right? And so, uh, doing this pro bono makes it a little harder. So if you're not a member of the channel, that, that everything helps here, right? Um, but because Revised was awesome and you know, they sponsored us for this entire series, we're gonna do a bonus episode where we're gonna show you how Revised works on this channel. And so we're gonna do a quick like thirty to forty-five minute session next, on, on Thursday, where we'll walk you through how to back up your Jura, how to restore in case you delete stuff. And then, um, how to do, uh, site or product to product, um, like sandbox to production, uh, configuration moves, right? So if you've done a workflow or stuff like that, oftentimes you gotta recreate all that stuff in production and that's error prone. So we're gonna show you how to just pick up your sandbox configurations and pop them into production and not worry about, um, forgetting things. And so, yeah, so make sure you stick around for that. And, uh, yeah, I think that's, that's the, the big ones, Ronnie. I, I don't know. I don't know that I have any other tips other than you gotta go really well rested. I think that was one of the other things that kinda got me was I don't, I didn't sleep that well the night before. And so like when you're groggy and you're not reading, like if you're just tired, you're gonna skip the question. You're just gonna, you know, not pay as much detail to the question. I also wish, I don't know if this is a good thing or a bad thing, but I wish that the harder questions, I wish the test was in the order of hard to easy. Because I feel like the, the first thirty minutes of the test, like, I'm on fire, right? Like, I'm in the zone, I'm, I'm there, I'm, I'm focused, I'm hyper-focused. But by the time you get to that second half of that test, you're losing steam, right? And if that's where those, that, for me, that's where those reporting questions came in, like those, like question sixty-five through seventy. And so like, damn. Well, I wish this would have been at the beginning when I had energy and, and clarity and like by the time I, by the time I got to them, I was tired. So I would say, if you run out of juice like I do, skip through the easy ones, don't even waste time answering them. Like, just go and knock out the hard questions first while you have that clarity and you haven't been burnt out yet. And then go back and take care of the low hanging fruit because I just went in sec, in sequence, right? I went in sequential order. And by the time I get to those last ten questions, like you're, you're more, you're more spent than you were the first.
I take the opposite approach. I'll go through the question and knock out the easy ones. Again, I'm tallying, as Alex said, he does too. I'm tallying every time I know I have a slam dunk, one that I know I got right, I'm tallying him down, trying to get to that.
Forty-two.
Actually try to aim for fifty, so I have a buffer.
I, I, I tried, I couldn't. I, I, I told you, I had to stretch my buffer.
Um, Liz?
No, I don't think they are.
Questions are all equal, so an easy one is just as many points as a difficult one. That's why go through and tackle all the slam dunks first, try and get as high as possible. And then I'll, I'll let everyone I have any concern about any difficulty on, or I'm just not even sure about the answer, I'll flag. Cuz you could go back and look at questions again. That's, as Alex was saying, he went through it three times. So I'll go back and then I'll hit the flags again after I've tackled all the easy ones. Um, see what I get from those, see if maybe on a second read, I could see something, make, turns them into a slam dunk. I'll have a second pile of those points where I'm like, I think I got those right, but I'm not sure. And then we all had exams, we've all seen the questions that you just know, you have no clue.
And unfortunately in this test, there was more of those.
Um, and those are usually safer last and, um, I, even if I answer them, I think I got the answer right, I don't count them.
Yeah. And that's what, that's what worried me on this one, right? Because I, when I went through it, I had like thirty tallies where I'm like, all right, I got thirty slam dunks, I'm like, great, but I need forty-two to walk out of this test alive.
And again, I'm aiming much higher. I'm usually aiming for like fifty or sixty.
Oh, MVP kinda guy, man. I couldn't, I, I think I walked out with forty-five tallies on my paper. And at least ten of those forty-five, I was like, I have no frigging clue if that was a slam dunk or not. I had a higher probability cuz I did, so another pro tip, right? Just do positive elimination. So I'm like, just by the simple fact that I've eliminated the other questions and I got it down to a fifty-fifty shot, then I took the tally. But I'm right there with Liz, man. I'm a seeds get degrees kinda person too. Luckily for us, you need D's, you need D's to pass these tests, so. But yeah, no, as soon as I.
That's the number we keep talking about, this forty-two. There are seventy questions that actually count. There's normally like seventy-two and the extras are, um, again, you wanna know which one are the extras.
I have never seen that, Ronnie. You told me that like two or three times, but I've never seen that.
Oh, I've seen it every exam I've taken.
I got seventy.
I wonder if Atlassian has me flagged in the system.
I got seven, yeah, you might be cuz I got seventy questions.
Um, but we're trying to get to that sixty-five percent of seventy questions, which is right at forty-two.
No, sixty percent is what, for this, for the six twenty, you need sixty, you need sixty percent.
Right, it's sixty. Either way, forty-two is the magic number. Again, I like to have a buffer. So I usually try and get up to fifty.
I tried, I'm telling you, man. I barely even got to the forty-two on this one. That's why when I.
I mean, you say that, but.
I hit that submit button and I was like, I was like, oh, man, I should have not hit that submit button. But like, screw it, I clicked it and it takes a second to load, it's not instantaneous.
Oh, that, yeah, that is like the longest second of your life, especially when you're not sure how you did.
Yeah. And so again, I was genuinely surprised. I got that eighty-five and one more down the books and never again. Believe it says Ronnie gets the, are you a robot question?
Well, I mean, objectively, I am a cyborg, so fair. Well, I mean, objectively, I am a cyborg, so fair.
No, because you mentioned that for all the tests, but I've never gotten more questions than the ones that that lasting advertises you you get. Get get to forty, pick one letter, get McDonald's, make a D breakfast.
I have only had to fall back. And I'm proud of this with my Eliasian exam career. I've only had to fall back to pick one letter. For like five questions total over all the exams I've taken. At least most of them I've had some clue on.
Liz, so at one point, so I accidentally almost did this, right? Because when I got to the end. Um, on the UI, it's not very clear. So I hit next and it's like. You're done with the test. Are you ready to submit? I was like, no, 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 not ready to submit. Uh, so I had to like click. I was like, where's the exit button without closing the test down? So do not, when you get to the last question, don't hit next, rather go back along the bottom. There's all this, all the questions. So go back to number one and start over. But if you click next on the last one, you'll like the test will think you're done. Then you'll have a mini heart attack.
Like that, um, that last minute is absolutely the longest second ever.
Brutal, but yeah, I I don't know that I want to walk into a test and go, have you heard of the the famous Kevin Hart thing that he did? Abacadaba, abacadaba? Have you heard?
I have not heard of that, but I am not surprised.
Yeah, apparently when he was taking his SATs in high school or whatever, like nobody told him that SATs were important. So he just went abacadaba, abacadaba down the test like A B, you know, ABBA, C A D, whatever, abacadaba. So yeah, that's one way to one way to take the test.
What I was told when I was practicing for my ACTs, which is one of the American um. College entrance exams you could take um, just for international folks who may not know. What I did, what I was told is most answers.
C or D?
Statistically are C.
Yeah, I've heard of that.
Want to just pick, if you're just going to pick a letter because you have no clue. At least go with C because that gets you just on pure random chance, the best chance.
Liz, you're an Ochem major. I actively stay away from Ochem. Um, also, I would say, I would say if you don't have time, but you have money. Then I would just take the test, pay the two hundred fifty dollars, take the test, run through it. Maybe you get lucky. But then you're going to have a much better appreciation of what you need to know for that second retake. They're like.
And the second take your take is usually discount. They'll give you discount code for the next retake.
Yeah. So so if you if you don't have time, because we we spent, we started this, what, April, right? So if you don't have. If you are tight on time, but have funds, just take the test twice. Um, it you'll probably get you'll you'll most likely pass it the second time, but I think it's a better. Like if I walked in right now and retook it, like I feel like I'd get a better score without having to re-study for it. Obviously, I would look up reports and know my damn reports better. But that that would be my tip. All right, Ronnie, I am all out of tips and uh, I'm getting hungry for breakfast.
Yeah, we'll leave us with one more tip and then I think I'm going to be there with you. Don't go into the test hungry. Make sure you have a good breakfast.
Yeah, um. Oh, you are allowed to take breaks on this on the ACP. So it's interesting because the the test centers. They everybody's taking all kinds of different tests, right? And so certain tests like at lasting gives the test and center rules. And so like yours, like for art, for the ACPs, at least in my center, you have to be wanded. Every time you come in and out of the test center. So if like if I were to go to the restroom, they rewand you and stuff like that. Um, but then another interesting thing is like they will uh, tell you if you're allowed to take breaks or not. Like some of them allow you to take breaks and others don't, but the last ones apparently do. I always said the two days back from the voucher expiration. Eggs, bacon, sausage and a fruit cup. Yep. You got to go in there with something. Um, I went in fasting. I don't know that it hurt me, but it probably helped me focus more. But towards the telling, like if you're in there, like if I would have taken the three hours, I think I would have been starving. But I did get myself a nice meal as a reward after.
I get something good on the way to the exam, so um, I'm not having that distraction. And also my brain has fuel, so by the time I finish, I'm not feeling like I've worked a twelve hour day.
That's probably why I felt that way because I the whatever fuel was in my stomach, it went to the brain and exhausted it all. I'm walking out super hungry and super tired.
But congratulations, Alex. You have earned it.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure I did.
One more and then you get to wear a jacket. And I think you already stated it, but what is your next exam? And by proxy, my next exam.
The 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 four twenty, we're gonna, we're gonna start the four twenty sessions. I'm going to give myself some time, but maybe maybe August or something till I August.
Again, I have a feeling you should early part of October plan to take an exam.
No, I'm going to take it the last.
About the six or so?
No, I'm going to take it like the the first of October so I can have it all taken care of before I go to Barcelona. We're shooting for end of September. So let's work, let's walk backwards sixteen weeks from the end of September. So we'll probably start it in like two weeks. So folks, make sure you subscribe because we're going to start the four twenty study sessions. I got my coupon right here. And so I just got.
What's on the other side of that coupon, Alex?
Because congratulations, you have earned a free at last in learning voucher.
Oh, I want you to show us.
Oh, I don't think so. All right, folks, make sure that subscribe button, special shout out and thank you to Revise again for making all this possible. Because without them, I don't know that we would have been here for eighteen sessions.
No, no. Um, and we'll catch you next time.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.